Today is my call of Bamberg County School District Board of Trustees meeting. Today is August 4th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The first board meeting of the 25-26 school year. And we're glad to see all the board members here and the folks who are watching on TV and the spectators out in the audience. Our first item on the agenda is pledge of allegiance among the citizens. We stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. This pause for a member's silence. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Board members, y'all have had an opportunity to review your board agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we accept the agenda as printed for this next meeting.
All right, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Bamberg for the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say, oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I did have a question. I noticed that number seventeen is board members' comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's a new addition.
That is a new addition.
And that's part of the public meeting.
Yes, ma'am, that is part of the public meeting. Something new. We're gonna be innovative a little bit and we'll see how it works. If it goes too long and doesn't work very well, then we'll eliminate it. All right. Is that the only discussion we had? Okay. All right, for all those in favor, say by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, and the motion passes. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes for June 25th, 2025, July 7th, 2025, and July 24th, 2025. What's, y'all have had an opportunity, I hope, to review the minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June 25th, 2025, July 7th, 2025, and July 24th, 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion from this bunch for approval of the minutes for June 25th, July 7th, and July 24th, 2025. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Anybody, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. All right, next we have our school reports. Mr. Olmer, I'm assuming that you're gonna do the reports for tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, thank you for allowing the principals to go home this afternoon. They've had a long day. First day is a tough day to come to a board meeting at the end of the day after you do all that all day. All right, so Rich Carroll Elementary School, current enrollment, yours says 694 as of this afternoon about 2:30. Their enrollment was 698. No discipline for four, no student achievement reported this time. Upcoming events, August 12th to 14th, they will start their I-Ran benchmark testing. August 25th, annual Title One meeting at 5:00 o'clock, sixth meeting at 5:30, and PTO at 6:00 o'clock, all that afternoon. You have any questions specific to Rich Carroll Elementary School, I urge you to reach out to this name. Do you have any questions for me about Rich Carroll? Okay. Vander Garth Middle School, last week, enrollment was 175. Today, 2:00, it's 182 as of this afternoon, okay? Once again, no discipline to report, no new data for student achievement. She did hold her summer bridge program, July 21st to the 24th. That would be all of her rising seventh graders. She invites them to come over. She said she had 54 students come, so she had a pretty decent program. Seventh, eighth grade orientation was July 30th, 2025, that was last week. And number six, she talks about the DEMS Academy, delivery system for school expectations and procedures. Ms. Miller likes many lesson plans for her teachers that do it home room. They go over school-wide behavior expectations with the students, student conduct with the students, technology procedures with the students, Google classroom with the students, and academic expectations. Those usually last for the first two weeks of school every year she does that, so just trying to orient her kids as to what they expect and what she expects out of them, so that's what the DEMS Academy is, and what she goes through in that time. See, if I have any questions for me for Vander Garth's name.
I'd just like to make a comment, but I did attend this open house and I was very impressed. And I was impressed because looking, Ms. Miller did listen to every member of her staff, the teaching members of her staff, and everyone was sitting lovely down at the class. That was great.
She's...
She was happy.
If you have any other questions on specific Vander Garth Middle School, please reach out to the principal, she'd be glad to answer them. All right, I got Mr. Smith at Vander Garth High School. His enrollment on the start and end of last week was 392, today was 390, so his last two. No discipline to report, any notice. No academics up to report today. He talked a little bit about past events that were at the hotel last week. He had senior registration, junior registration, sophomore orientation. They had a freshman orientation, and he said he had 74 out of 94 parents attend. So I'm not really good with math, because we're about to say it's about 80% of the students' parents showed up for that, so that was a little handy. Future events, Vander Garth High School in August, we've got a school improvement council meeting on 8/21 at 5:30. He's got an open house that same afternoon, it goes from 5:30 to 7:30. Then he's got to meet the Raiders later on that afternoon, and there's gonna be a community pep rally at the high school. So that's going on all in that same afternoon, that same evening. If you have any questions about Vander Garth High School that I can answer, I'd be glad to do that. If not, if you've got something you'd like to ask Mr. Smith, once again, please reach out to him. Does anybody have anything for me?
Miss Kirk.
Okay, let's go ahead.
I'm sorry. So on the bottom here, he's got six men to graduate, they're from all the regions. We're not there yet, we haven't seen them yet.
Okay, so he's talking about this year, he has six men to graduate.
He had them last year.
Okay.
And Mr. Olmer, the community pep rally, would that be held in the gym at the high school?
It probably will start in the gym, he didn't say, usually it ends up outside. They used to have a bomb fire. I don't know if they'll have that this year or not, but that's usually back behind the football field where they go swim pool. I don't know if that's on the agenda this year or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I apologize, I'm a few minutes late, so you may have already mentioned it, but as I was looking through it, I just had some questions. I know you have given us the total number of students. Do we have yet sort of an average of how many are in each grade? I know at one time we were concerned about the sixth grade, how big it was, but once they've gone over to the middle school, how has that distribution played into it?
We can break it down in my class, it's done that way, we just didn't do it here.
Okay, could that be done at some point?
Yes, I can go to power school and pull it down on campus now.
On who?
Power school. You can't, but administration, administration can go in here and then pull the number streets class.
I thought I had new authority.
No, ma'am, not yet. Okay, anything else before I move to the other elementary school? Okay. Dr. Johnson would like to report that they had an open house Wednesday, July 30th, and she told me, I thought this morning, they had a very good turnout, that lasted from four to six. They also went over Title One information with the parents. That same night, Dawn Staley showed up with the Inner Soul Foundation, and she was trying to wait on Dawn Staley to show up. She was, there was a little bit of confusion as to when the open house was gonna be because she was waiting on Dawn Staley to let her know when she could show up because the Inner Soul Foundation came and donated a bunch of school supplies and shoes. So it was a lot, that was a little bit last minute, and we apologize for that, but she had to wait to find out when Dawn could show up. But anyways, Dawn Staley had come on Wednesday, July 30th, and I think all of us know who she is and what her foundation does, but they showed up and they gave out the pre-cake kids and kindergarten kids received backpacks with lots of school supplies in them, and grades one through five were given backpacks, school supplies, with socks and branded tennis shoes in them, so it was a pretty awesome deal. The parents were very much, very excited about it, and so was Dr. Johnson, so Mr. Jim Packer was also there, so it was a star-studded event, I guess you could say.
Absolutely.
But it was a pretty good time, so a lot of happy people. If you have any more questions about that, please reach out to Dr. Johnson, she'd be glad to answer those questions as well. And I'm not talking about this, but I'll say this, I've talked to all these principals today, I visit them today, everybody's had a great day, everything started off well, everything was smooth this morning, smooth this afternoon, and then we got a little bit of rain this missile, so. And that brings me to DeMar Coler Middle School. DeMar Coler Middle School is pretty lengthy, I'm just gonna kind of go through it pretty quickly, and if you have any specific questions about her behavior stuff or her academic plans that she's got for this year, once again, I urge you to reach out to her. She did have open house Wednesday night before 7:00, she said she had a great turnout, and then she's had some, she's got some PD stuff here that she listed, you know, some things that we use, sometimes we don't have in our integral, in our, or Wednesday night, in our board reports, so it's, like you said, it's got a lot going on. Her enrollment was 137 last week, it was down to 134 today. She is going to address behavior this year. Behavior at DeMar Coler Middle School was a issue last year. We had, DeMar Coler Middle School probably accounted for a third of the expulsion hearings we had last year. Not all those kids were expelled, but of the hearings we had last year, it accounted for a third across the district, so it was pretty, there was a lot going on. She is going to address that, through her positive behavior interventions that she's gonna try to create to do. She's got a behavior matrix, and she's finally using behavior intervention plans to kind of address these things. She calls it her Viking Voyage Behavior Matrix, where as it outlines clear, consistent expectations across all corners of the school, and her theme for both her behavior and academics this year is believe, belong, and become. She talks a lot about how she's going to achieve that, and I think she will, I think she's gonna be an outstanding addition to our school district. I'm really excited about having her with us this year. She goes on, she says her goal is through the consistent implementation of our behavior metric and strategic use of intervention plans, we aim to significantly reduce the office, discipline referrals, suspensions, and disruptive behaviors, ensuring a safe and engaging learning environment where every student has the opportunity to succeed. And I keep saying my glasses are very, I think my eyes are just looking at much worse than you can see.
It really is impressive to read what she's planned and...
If you've had a chance to sit down and talk to her, if you haven't had a chance to talk to her, you should. You should.
I spoke to her briefly at the luncheon, and she reminded me a lot of Ms. Miller, and I think Ms. Miller is mentoring her. I was very impressed.
She is, she is. Like I said, she goes on to talk about visible learning, how she wants to implement that in her school as well. She wants kids to be able to see learning. She says if they see it, then they're more willing to be able to grasp what they're working on. Once again, there's a lot going on here, if you'd like to read through it, if you have any questions, I would urge you, I would like her to all of that. Yes, ma'am?
I did have a question about, I didn't even know if the students accepted mixed up last year. Is that something the board just is not getting to know?
That's not generally something we, that we present in board meetings. They have access to it this morning, if you ask what I can get for it, but it's not generally something we...
Okay. Well, the number of...
Expulsion hearings.
Kids that were expelled and then re-accepted, or that were accepted.
So what happens if a child is expelled? In order for them to be allowed to come back to school, we have what's called a readmission hearing. And what that's it does is they have to sit right over there, and they have to ask for us to hear their, to hear their case and allow them back in school. And that's supposed to happen during the summer, and it's supposed to be prompted by that parent and that student, it's not something that is prompted by the school district, because once a child's expelled, they're transferred out of the district. They're no longer considered a student in the Vander County School District, so they have to ask to be readmitted. And we have those hearings, and I'm gonna say that 99.9% of the time, those kids are all out back in school, and their own probation when they come back, but the last thing we're gonna do is for a kid to be out of school. I mean, that's, that's not the answer, so. But we can get you numbers if you want numbers from last year for expulsions.
I think they're talking about kids that might get expelled, so it was an eye of them.
Well, it's, you know...
Once they hear it from one school, that's serious, don't you think?
It is, it's, I feel good about her addressing the issues. She comes in, goes and wants what problem is, and she's prepared to solve that problem, at least work for mitigating that problem, so I feel good about that, so. All right, I got DeMar Coler High School, if anybody has any other questions. All right, their enrollment was 173 last week, 180 today. Theirs is broken down by, theirs is broken down by class, but their numbers are 180, no discipline. He's got 29 kids currently enrolled and doing enrollment classes at DeMar Tech. Those classes will begin on August 18th. Some important dates, which were last week. He had his Title One meeting on Wednesday night. He had his open house on Wednesday night. He had a senior parent meeting that night, it started at 5:30, so it went to 7:00, it's going on and stuff. Yes, ma'am?
Do the high school students in Bamberg have access to Orangeburg Tech or DeMar?
DeMar Tech, yes, ma'am.
They take classes there?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Everybody has access to the same things, sometimes the enrollment classes. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Olmer, was the senior parent meeting on that same night, or is that happening up?
I'm sorry, it's coming up. I'm sorry, sorry. It's 8:14, so it's, plus the next two weeks, that's gonna be at 5:30 on August 14th. I think that's all there is tonight? All right, is anybody have any other questions about school reports? Like I said, if you haven't seen anything, if you wanna ask a question, I urge you to reach out to those principals, and they'd be glad to give you any information they have.
Mr. Olmer.
Yes, sir.
Well, first thing I wanna publicly thank Dawn Staley and her foundation for the school supplies and the sneakers. And Mr. Olmer, I'd like for you to write a letter of thanks on behalf of the board to her. I also wanna thank the principals and commend them for a smooth first day, and hopefully we'll have a smooth, smooth school year. Everybody talks about the summer and how much fun you can have, well, principals are always working, so they don't get to have much fun, but it sounds like the first day went really, really well, and I want to publicly thank them for all their work and also their staff, and thank you and your staff, because I know y'all had a lot to do with the opening day and making it smooth as well, so thank you for that.
It was much better than it was last year, first day of school, I don't know if y'all remember or not, but we were all home, ready for hurricane hits.
Yeah, well, hopefully that's not gonna happen. Let's don't say the H for it, okay?
Yes, my word.
I think so.
Went one day and missed the rest of the week.
Dunk, dunk jinxes now, dunk jinxes. All right, you're gonna do the, next on our agenda is the athletic report. This is turning into Mr. Olmer's show.
Right, right, right. And I hate being served with tension, so. Athletic report for Robert Williams, you have schedules for all of our fall winter sports in your packet. You also have a calendar that's got all of the events for your fall winter. If you look online on each high school's webpage, you'll also find all the school events, athletic events and such that are going on in high schools as well, so all of that's over there. So you got any questions about, if you're on schedule, once again, Mr. Robert Williams is the man, and you have everything, you should have everything in front of you for all of winter sports. So if you have any questions about these, let me know.
I have a question, you may not have an answer.
Okay.
Will we be getting a pass to be able to attend home games?
I'm sure, I didn't have that first. I've never been part of that, yes, ma'am, you can go get that.
Okay, very, thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Olmer, you still up here. His next on the agenda, I'll get comfortable.
So my super finish report, first day of school, the day began smoothly, I did start off this morning at Rich Carroll. I did visit schools this morning, checking in with the principals, seeing how things were going. Our principals were excited about how things started this morning. I'd like to commend them and their staff for all that they've done, for our custodians for getting the buildings ready, for our maintenance craft, getting grass cut, and trying to stay on top of that, that is not an easy job during this time of year when it is so hot all day long, and it's raining and the grass is growing and won't stop. And once again, I would congratulate and thank my office staff over here as well. We've been trying to move into our new building and getting all of our work going all at the same time, and that is not an easy tour either. I've got several folks in our district office who put in lots, lots and lots and lots of hours working, and I appreciate all that they do, so. Our administrative office, we are mostly in Bamberg right now. Mr. Ricky Page dragged you a little bit because he don't wanna come over here with us, so he's, he'll be over there shortly. We're hoping that the boardroom will be ready for our next month's meeting. Mr. Booney and myself and Mr. Page met with the audio guy today, who came over and talked with us about mics, and setting up, fixing up the mics and cameras. He assured us that it would be ready before our next board meeting, so we're hoping that that's gonna be the case. Just going over here, I don't know if you're doing what I'm treating you, the adult ed has kind of moved in over here, and they were gonna use just a few rooms to start with, and they have spread out, so I'm glad they're able to use it. They're using this for classrooms, testing facilities, and offices, and it's given them the ability to kind of branch out a little bit, so we're glad they're able to use this space. Bamberg County School District Improvement Plan update, as part of our ongoing focus on continuous improvement, I'd like to provide the board a brief update on the current status of school performance designation with the district at the present time. Now, this could change, and we hope that it does change in October, when our school report cards come out. We'll get new information, that'll be the 15th, we hope, and we hope that we come off of some of these lists. One school has been or is designated as a priority school. We have two schools that are identified as an ATS I, which is an additional targeted support improvement school right now. One school is currently rated below average based on the most recent state report card data. Once again, the Saffron Department of Education will release updated school report cards on October 15th. Following this release, the district will present the board a comprehensive update on school ratings and progress, along with any required steps, plan, adjustments based on the new data. The priority school stuff, that changes every three years, that's a cycle, that ends this year, 2025, that cycle ends. We hope, and our data looks good, we hope that we're coming off that list. The two schools that are identified as ATS I, that is a yearly thing, you can come off of that every, you have an opportunity to come off that every year, every October. So, and of course, the last one is based on the last report card, so you can come off that every year, too. So we're really hoping to move off of some of these things, and we have pretty good data from last year, and we're hoping that it's gonna boost us with our ERC scores and other test scores, and get us out of those designations, so. You have a federal programs report that Ms. Phyllis Oak Street has added to our list As you know, a lot of this stuff has been withheld, it should be right there. It looks like it's right here. I have it marked up, you have that?
Okay.
They want me to do it? Fine, okay, go do it. These are allocations for 25-26 Title One. It's $1,287,968.35. That was just allocated to us. Normally you have July the first to have a plan submitted to the State Department, but since everything was held back, they're giving us to August the 15th to turn in this plan. We're working on that right now. Other federal funds, the 21st Century, which is an after-school program money, Title Two, teacher quality, Title Three, multilingual learners, Title Four, student support and academic enrichment. These were all released a couple weeks ago to the federal level. We're still making them release to the state level, and once they're released to the state level and they tell us that we got the money, then we'll start worrying about how we're gonna spend it, but until they do that, we're not counting on it. Title Five, Rural Educational Achievement Program, those allocations will be set in a later this year. Those funds are used to support instructional supplies, staff development, and technology. She's gonna get you all this list here, she's gonna have to look over it, so if you have any questions, then we'll answer later on. We've got $52,775 for Perkins money, and $50,000 for state equipment funds. These funds are used in our high schools for CATE stuff, career technical, technical education. We use that money to upgrade our program equipment and outfit any of our classrooms that need to be upgraded. We're currently working on these plans, and they're due to Saffron Department of Education in that office. Just a little rundown of what we got going on with our federal program support. Like I said, you all know, and you all heard, the federal governor had them with all of these funds due to the district, and we usually get that July the first, so... So, um, if you guys have been working on budget, you know, I know y'all heard Mr. Ron talking and beating on that and talking about that. If you look through that and you have any questions, email me and we'll, I'll find out answers for you, okay? All right, we'll move on to district enrollment data.
Uh, hold on, Mr. Olmer, excuse me. Uh, could you have the Director of Federal Programs, once the Title One application is submitted, uh, include a packet?
Okay.
Include the, um, application in our packets so we can take a look. It doesn't necessarily have to be an agenda item.
Okay.
Uh, but I think it would be good information for the board to see, uh, how the funds are being spent. It's a public document, it should be posted anyway on our website, but it would be nice if we got to see that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
I'll make sure you get that. Okay? Our district enrollment, um, eighteen hundred eleven kids adds up today, students adds up today. Uh, this time last year, uh, we were looking at about eighteen twenty-five, so damaged a few, but, uh, look like we're still in good shape with the numbers. Uh, you also have a little welcome back, um, Sycamore School Board Association, um, poster. We gonna take the pictures of that tonight. Hope all of you got your hair brushed through. Mr. Ricky Page just got his camera, I saw him walking a minute earlier. And I saw some ladies starting messing with their eyebrows, they were getting married for pictures.
Has he got the fat filter on him?
I'm close to it, he'll have to have it.
I, I, I just feel like I need to have my boyish figure, you know how to go.
He knows how to, he knows how to crop pictures.
Okay, good. Somebody will have to stand in front of him.
Okay, so that's all of my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Olmer.
Yes, sir.
All right, next on our agenda is the update discussion of proposal for moving the sixth grade from Richard Carroll Elementary School to Bamberg Earhart Middle School. As y'all can recall, in the February meeting, uh, this was discussed, and, uh, it was tabled at that meeting to the August meeting, so we're bringing it back up. Is there any update as far as room or finances or anything that y'all can tell us?
No.
To change the situation?
No, not at this point, no.
And there, there's no room in the end, I mean, room in the school for?
We have cut off all intra-district requests for students trying to enroll at Richard Carroll Elementary School. Uh, we're doing everything we can to try to keep our numbers down. Um, but I think we're in okay shape right now in terms of room, but I know financially we can't, we can't afford it right now, so. Based on what my CFO keeps telling us, so.
Now, based on the quotes we got back in, what was it, September? Yeah, based on those quotes, we were thinking four million, maybe, and it was like eight to ten million for all the bids, so, no. That was something we, at that point, we realized that was something we couldn't look at right now.
Okay. Uh, and I know Richard Carroll's full to the brim. Uh, what about the room situation? Does there, I mean, has everybody got classrooms and, and?
Yes, sir.
People are spaced comfortably?
Life is placed right now.
Okay.
We're full, but everybody does have a classroom, everybody does have a space. She's had to be real creative about classrooms in terms of having spaces for people, but she's, we're good to go in terms of spaces.
Y'all have any more questions, any other questions for them?
Just have to keep that on the agenda for the future. You know, if we ever come up with some money, that makes the problem.
Well, it is, and, and, you know, what, what's happening is, of course, you know, the farther we go along, the more expensive it gets. I mean, that's just the reality of it, I mean, it's like Ms. Fur said, at first thought it was four or five million. Now we're looking at, well, I think it was seven million is, is what I remember somebody saying, but it could be seven.
They really shocked me. Um, they might not have shocked you, but they shocked me when I looked at it.
Yeah. And I just don't, I mean, I, I just don't think we can afford it, but by the same token, we don't need to chill and pile on top of each other as well.
There are no, like, rural area grants or anything that can be applied for, for this sort of thing? I don't know at all on this, I'm asking.
Um, sorry, not that I know of. I mean, um, we can ask Representative Bamberg if he can help us, Ned's legislators sometimes have extra money, we could ask him for help. But other than that, there's not really any grants out there. The only other thing you could do is issue a, or issue a bond referendum and ask the voters to pay for it. I don't believe they got the pass in Bamberg, so that, your options right now are very limited.
Okay.
And y'all didn't want to go the horrible route, so you're, if you want to be breaking order, you, at this point, cannot right now.
Do we have sort of an average number? I mean, is there this magic number, average of students that we want per classroom, that we feel like they can perform at their utmost? Because I know, like, what, after September, we oftentimes get kids coming in?
We would probably like to keep our numbers down around twenty. Last year, we had some classes that had twenty-five in them. Um, which is lots of kids, especially our, our, our younger classes. Once you get twenty kids in a class, you, you're asking a lot of a kindergarten teacher or a first grade teacher to keep up with twenty to twenty-five. We had a class that had twenty-five in it, kindergartners. Um, you know, obviously, it's smaller, your number, you know, better results you should have, so. Uh, and you're also talking about trying to retain teachers. You know, you, you have twenty, twenty-five kids in a classroom, especially twenty-five kids in a classroom, if it doesn't really motivate your kids, then your teachers don't want to work and stay. Uh, that's, that's asking a lot of them. Um, you know, obviously, if you can stay down around twenty, that's, that's probably a magic number. Uh, we've, we've got some schools in the district that have less than that, we've got some that have more than that, but, um, we would like to keep our numbers down around twenty, that's why. I want to talk to Ms. Edwards before, but, you know, we go up around twenty, that's when we generally cut off any intra, intra-district requests that are asked, you know, to move from one school to another. Once it hits twenty, we try to stop it because we know we may have some people move in to that, um, that attendance, um, we can't not allow them to go to school here, so. Um, we really try to do our best to, from getting over time.
As we were going around the different schools the other day, I was impressed that it was not desk on top of desk. There was room for the kids to move about when necessary, so. And I talked to a young man, he was in seventh grade, he said he had seventeen kids in his class, and I thought, whoa, that's awesome.
I have a question. So, all of the children that are coming in are just trying to go over to the Bamberg area, or any of them trying to come to the Denmark area?
Most of our intra-district, uh, requests, obviously, are going from Denmark to Bamberg. Um, we have a lot of out-of-district kids trying to move to Bamberg. Uh, lots of kids from Orangeburg trying to move to Bamberg. We've had quite a few from Collin County this year trying to come into Bamberg. Bone County trying to come into Bamberg schools. Uh, the school's in Bam, the city of Bamberg, so that's where most of our kids are trying to enroll. Uh, and our class numbers are very much larger than they are here, here in Denmark, so. The intra-district stuff, we, we try to look at it and determine whether or not those kids really need to be in schools in Bamberg, if there's a need for them to be there. Um, and we try to look at that stuff before we make a decision about moving those kids or allowing those kids to go to school in Bamberg, so. But we cut that off a month ago. Yeah, it might have been a little longer than a month, but we stopped with that one, so. Now, the student requests or parent requests for intra-district transfer, there are things that can, um, cause that child to be pulled out of that district behavior, attendance. There are things that they have to meet in order to stay in the school that they've asked, or their, their parents have asked to have them placed in, so there are reasons or they do have to be requirements to stay in those schools, so. But that's generally how it works in terms of where everybody wants to go.
I'm not sure if I heard this correctly. Did you say, as of now, there are no more kids coming from other districts?
As of now, we're not allowing any more intra-district requests, just now.
Okay, but from outside?
We, we've cut that off too. Unless we actually absolutely have spots available, we, we, you know, we won't allow that either, so.
Because you never know who might move here.
You never know if they might move here, that's right. If we got a class that's small, you know, and they're trying to get, say, you got, you got eighth grade, and eighth grade has seventy-five kids in it. You don't, you don't put any spaces at, at eighth grade, and if they're trying to move in at eighth grade, we would look at that, um, and, and, before we made a decision, so.
Most of the ones y'all see about this point are ones that are already on?
Rosters.
Rosters. They are just having a hard time getting the releases.
Because obviously, that has to be done every year. If you've got somebody out of district who are coming to school here, they may have been enrolled, enrolled here for five years, but every year, they have to jump through those same hoops without being, um, released from their district, so.
So, you don't feel like we need to look at a temporary solution at this point, or this school year?
In terms of moving to a middle school or?
Correct, kind of coming back full circle.
Um, no, I, my problem with temporary is, is it costs a lot of money for temporary. And I, I feel like if we're gonna spend a lot of money, it needs to be on something that's permanent. That's my opinion.
And we're in a position, you feel like we're at?
I think I'm okay, yes, ma'am, right now.
All right, uh, ladies, uh, we, we need to take an action on this item. Um, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Porter.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that the, um, table is for now, and we plan to reconsider it in January of twenty twenty-six.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you, Ms. Hurst. We have a motion from Ms. Hurst that this, uh, proposal be tabled, uh, until the January twenty twenty-six, um, meeting, and then we'll type this issue up again. There you go. I'm gonna ask Santa right now and go write my letter. And if, and, and if I win the lottery, I mean, it, it, it's, it's a done deal. Well, I, I will, I'll go. I'll go and do that as soon as I get out of here. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You're none, motion passes.
Well, Mike could talk to, um, Mr. Bamberg if he, if the state might have any extra, I don't know, which I don't know, but keep us in mind.
Just see if he can get some of the bar and we'll count it, never mind. Okay, next on our agenda is elective course approval, uh, for assigned supervision, college and career preparation, work experience, action-based learning, grades pre-K, action-based learning, kindergarten and action-based learning, first grade. Mr. Olmer?
You know, the packet in front of you, um, every year, we have to, um, ask that these board, these, um, courses are locally board-approved. Uh, you have an assigned supervision, um, class at Bamberg High School, that is a one credit class. Um, we're trying to use that class to entice some of our best and brightest to, um, pursue a career in education. And what that student is trying to pair up, the student has a three-point-o better GPA with a teacher, to let her work as, work with that teacher, uh, and is graded by that teacher for that effort. That is assigned supervision, um, three, seven, nine, nine, two, one, T W, or three, seven, nine, nine, two, one, C H, and that's part of the credit.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, this is, um, I got paged by the English teacher to point out that the first sentence in the target population irrationalism of sounds.
Okay, I'm trying to back up here.
Outstanding, I sent them, I mean, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade students with three-o average, um, who excel in a particular content area and exhibit appropriate personality characteristics will be invited, are eligible. There's a word.
I got you.
I don't know the name of it. That's too many.
Okay. I'll get that to the appropriate person and give the kids the paperwork. Okay, we are also asking, um, you to approve, uh, career and tech, career, college and career prep one, course three, seven, nine, nine, eight, five, C H, or half of a credit, yes, ma'am, and go.
The question on this one, fast.
Go ahead.
Is it okay? Um, they have six different units, well, including the wrap-up, and the first unit is, has psych lessons, and, um, one is on testing and assessment. And I was wondering if there would actually be learning different test techniques, skills than actually practicing, who knows?
I'm, I'm assuming that is the case, yes, ma'am.
So, that, that wouldn't just be like two weeks, that might be a longer, or two days.
It may be, yes, ma'am. That unit, that, those six units in that exam is supposed to last a semester long?
A semester.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, trying to prepare students for, for college. Uh, that is a half, half of a credit. Okay? Asking to approve, um, work experience, three, seven, nine, nine, two, five, C H, um, school to work. And it gives our students an opportunity to work and learn world experiences in the career field, these are toys with or without compensation. Uh, they get half the credit for this, they have to work one hundred and eighty, uh, hours per semester to get credit for it. Yes, ma'am.
Does that count? Oh, wait, for semester? Is that ninety days? So, they have to work twenty hours, or?
Ninety, ninety days, yes, ma'am.
And do they do this, are they, can they get out of school to go to their job, or is this all after?
Well, it depends on what their schedule looks like.
Oh, okay.
Um, some of these jobs are in school and some of them are out of school, but a lot of these seniors may not have a fourth period. They have a lot of need to go work these, these jobs, yes, ma'am.
Is this popular?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a lot of, um, local businesses that, uh, have these kids working out?
We have several local businesses. Um, I know at one point, uh, we had students working at, I won't say Phoenix even, we've had kids out, um, working in these, I think we may have had some pieces of, we've had students out, so. It's not a whole lot of businesses in Bamberg, so.
Right.
Uh, in Denmark, but, but our students do get out. Um, and like I said, some of these kids are actually allowed to come to work out and work with. Mr. Ricky Page has several employed with him with technology. Uh, we had some in maintenance at some point. Um, it's, like I said, it usually works around their schedules, what we're trying to do, so.
I had a couple of students last year at the work, physical therapy.
Okay, good, good.
Uh, Mr. Olmer, is this, is this in place for these courses to be, um, basically for this, this twenty-five, twenty-four year?
For this year, yes, ma'am. Every year, we have to, we have to go to submit them again, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. And, um, is there, so this, these are specific to Bamberg Earhart High School?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a plan, or does for these type of courses to be equalized across the district, or does Denmark have their own set of, uh?
Denmark has their own stuff in terms of what they offer your high school, your kids in high school, yes, ma'am.
They, they are equivalent to these, or they have?
Well, it's really based on me. Bamberg Air High School has used a lot of these because of the electives and the number of kids we have and the, and the shortage we have of electives, so we try to be creative in offering, um, these locally board-approved classes to try to fill those gaps. So, we try to be creative in, in, in the past several years to, to do that. And that, and that's how we do it. Uh, also have local board-approved, uh, classes, um, action-based learning for pre-K. Uh, also have local board-approved, um, classes, um, action-based learning for pre-K, kindergarten and first grade. Uh, that's a, it's an action-based learning class. Um, kids go in, a lot of motion-type sensory-type stuff. Work on cross lateralization, body space, balance, visual development, pack-tolling, motor skills, visual tracking, hand-eye foot coordination, so on and so forth. Obviously, they don't get, um, hard immune strat, but, but we have to have it locally board-approved so we can have it in higher schools.
Is this, excuse me, is this class conducted by an OT or PT or an F?
It is not. It is, um, it, it is conducted with, um, with the aide, with the oversight of, of the PTs and OTs in primary schools, elementary schools. But it's all, but an aide actually goes in. He's been trained. She's had to go through training to teach this.
But it's, do the children go through another room or?
They do. Yes, ma'am. This is separate classroom.
Oh, a nice classroom.
Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say, is this happening in Denmark as well? And if not, can it be?
It can if they request it. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It's not specific to a school here, so it can be used anywhere.
Okay.
This is the only one that's not specific to a school.
Mr. Olmert, let me ask you something. The, the, do the two high schools have a teacher cadet program in each district?
They do not. They do not. We don't want one, but we can't find a teacher to teach it.
Is that in Denmark?
Both schools. The last year we had teacher cadets, um, in our high schools when Miss Jane knew she taught it, and that's been four or five years ago. One of our issues was that, so she was also an English teacher. And we had to have English. Whereas we love to have teacher cadet, we had to make the decision for her to teach English and then she left for next year. So we're not going to find anybody to replace her. So.
You don't have a social studies teacher that could possibly?
I don't know. We're gonna have to look at schedules. At one time, um, also it was offered at, at Cote. But we no longer work with Cote. You know, I don't want to anymore. So, and I don't know that they still have that program.
Denmark gets the same communication and stuff as, as we do. I mean, they should know about all these things that are available, right?
It's based on need. Yes, ma'am. Those, those schools are creative and if they need something, something that they, that they can use, then the locally board, um, approves stuff, it's things they can create. And, um, as long as it's approved by you guys and as long as we can find a code, Miss Tucker's and she's in the middle of all that too. So we try to be creative so we can offer our kids opportunities, um, and especially the electives. And it's hard, it's hard, the electives are tough in these small districts because it's hard to find people to come in and teach the elected type of classes. And to be able to support those teachers, elected teachers, uh, with students because everybody's not interested in the same type of stuff, obviously. So that's one good thing about these classes that you got in front of you. Those classes can be very creative in terms of what the students do and what their, what their interest is all. So now with these kids who are able to take dual enrollment classes, um, you know, a lot of them can graduate in three years. So we try to fill the gaps and plug the gaps with a lot of these electives too. Try to have them things to do and offer them things that they normally wouldn't have access to. I heard somebody in here.
So when you take, it's unconfused when, is a dual enrollment class sort of like a substitute for what to do with your time for an elective?
Dual enrollment class is a, is a college-level class.
Okay.
That you get.
So that's, you don't really get high school credit for it?
You do.
Oh, you do.
You get credit for it. It counts towards your, your, um, community special, yes, ma'am. But it's kind of at a higher level.
Right. Okay.
Any more questions?
How many trade classes do we have? And then we have welding and, um?
We have welding, we have cosmetology. Uh, we've got, um, we've got, uh, goodness gracious, cooking on spot here. We do. We had, um, home and arts.
There was a gentleman talking about small engines?
That's ag, agriculture. They work for that on small engines and agriculture classes. But we don't have a small engine and repair class like we once had at Cote. Um, we have things offered through Denmark Tech, uh, if the kids can take, if they can fit it in their schedule. I would say that our welding program is probably our most popular program, is supposed to add seniors. And I would say that right now, our, um, that our, um, cosmetology classes probably has the fewest number of students enrolled in it. So, and we're hoping that, hoping that we can build those numbers this year. If not, we're gonna have to talk about our culinary arts next year.
We visited that machine, not what, what was the welding class. I was blown away. The machinery in there.
Yep. Lots of kids in there.
Yeah.
Of Bamberg and Denmark. So it's loaded as full.
Great.
All right. Uh, y'all have heard the recommendation from the interim superintendent. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a motion that we approve the elective courses A through F as they presented.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Eccles to approve the elective course approvals from A through F. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? You're none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You're none. The motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda is requests for out-of-state and overnight trip, uh, Denmark High, uh, excuse me, Denmark Ola High School seniors to CSRA College Night in Augusta on, uh, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Olmert, have you got any comments for this?
Uh, just an out-of-state trip. It's a day trip. Uh, seniors going. It's a free event. Uh, obviously it's a, it's a, um, it's a college night event. About four kids going. We have multiple, um, employees going to chef rooms. Uh, you have a list of students who will be attending, uh, all of our seniors. And, um, that's, that's what I got. We also have a flyer that we received from SLIS that they are sponsoring the event. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Olmert, I understand that the event is from five to eight. Um, I know it's in Augusta and I know it takes a while to check it. I don't understand why the students are leaving at one-thirty. Is it because one period, that's at one-thirty and then okay, it says up at two or three?
Well, your block periods are generally one-thirties, beginning of, beginning of the third period, beginning of the fourth.
I mean, they're leaving at one-thirty and it doesn't even start till five, but they're going to be home by eight-thirty.
Well, I was, the only thing I can say is maybe they're leaving, they're gonna grab something before they go.
I've been on reading.
More likely, that's okay.
I assume that is what was going on.
They didn't mention anything about cost.
So it just says that the courses is a free event. They've not said anything about food. So I would just assume that's why they're leaving at one-thirty.
Are, are the Bamberg Airheart, uh, seniors not going to this?
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, this is a good opportunity. They give, uh, they can win scholarships. They have, uh, chances to, to, um, help with, uh, college and technical school recruiters, uh, and, uh, I'd encourage anybody, any senior in high school, uh, to, to go to this and go to these opportunities so you can make a sort of an informed decision about what college you want to attend or tech school. Um, okay? All right. You've heard the recommendation from, uh, the interim superintendent. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, out-of-state trip or, uh, overnight trip for Denmark Ola High School seniors to the CSRA College Night, Augusta, Georgia, from September, on a September eleventh.
All right. Thank you. Miss, we have a motion from Ms. Eccles, uh, approving the request for, uh, out-of-state field trip for the Denmark Ola High School seniors to attend the CSRA College Night. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, all, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Mr. Olmert, uh, next on our agenda is the first reading for, uh, Bonn County School District Policy, Section G, personnel, uh, that's GCC, Professional Staff Leave and Absences. GCC dash R, Administrative Rule, Professional Staff Leave and Absences. GCD, Support Staff Leave and Absences. GCC AAAA, the Sick Leave Bank Program. GCC AAAA dash R, the Administrative Rule, Sick Leave Bank Program. GCC AAAAE, the Exhibit for the Sick, uh, Sick Leave Bank Program. GCC AAAA dash E dash one, the Sick Leave Bank Program, which is also, uh, exhibits. Uh, Mr. Olmert?
It's a lot of letters, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So we met, uh, I think it was last month, uh, we talked about, it was one of our budget meetings, that we were going to, um, discontinue paying staff members, uh, for days overnight. It was, was asked could we move to a hundred and twenty days of accrual for, uh, sick leave days? And you guys gave us permission to do that. We're going back to the policy GCC, um, GCC R and GCGDC. We have made those changes. The one change is we made to these policies is changing those days from ninety to a hundred and twenty. Uh, those changes in your, should be in yellow. Is it in yellow on your paper? It is in yellow. All the changes that were made, uh, was done and it was highlighted in yellow. You want me to take these one at a time? Mr. David, how you gonna do this?
You can take them.
Okay.
You can highlight with the lower letters.
So let's, let's, let's do these first. Uh, GCC, um, if you look on the sick leave, it just went from ninety days to a hundred and twenty days. Uh, and that's, was that like the third or fourth paragraph at the bottom? On the second page, you'll notice that it went from ninety-one days and ninety days to a hundred and twenty-one days and a hundred and twenty. So those days were just modified based on the hundred and twenty days of sick leave. Okay? And I only explain the hundred and twenty-one days there because I may get a question about that. If you read that, that says that we cannot fire you unless you, it's not an option unless you have a hundred and twenty-one days. You can't visit for a hundred and twenty-one days. Okay, so. I'm trying to. All right. So if you look on the third page, ninety-one days got changed to a hundred and twenty-one. A hundred and twenty days, or ninety days got changed to a hundred and twenty days. Out-of-state transfer, again, a hundred and twenty-eight sick leave for those in districts outside of the state. Page four had no changes. Page five had no changes. Page six had no changes. So the only changes were from ninety days to a hundred and twenty days, from ninety-one days, ninety days to ninety-one days. If you look at GCC dash R, the rule on the first page. You see the yellow highlighted? Uh, payable nights, you see a hundred and twenty work days. That was nine. You moved that to a hundred and twenty days. Page two, there were no changes. Page three, there were no changes. Page four, no changes. Page five, no changes. Once again, the only changes, GCC R, um, was moving from ninety days to a hundred and twenty days.
I have just a question out of curiosity, which I don't know if this is you or Devon, but, um, page three, out-of-state transfer, um, the district will accept up to a hundred and twenty days of sick leave from districts outside of the state. Does that mean that, that if they choose to use those hundred and twenty days, we're paying them that extra? Or does the out-of-state district send those funds with them? How does that work? Are we just accepting that additional expense basically?
Well, did you hear that?
Yes.
You have a question?
So when you transfer in from one state entity to another, you transfer your leave with you. So like if I were to leave here and go to another district, I have ninety days, they would go with me.
But for an out-of-state is my question.
We don't really have a lot of people coming from out-of-state.
Okay.
So we don't really get a lot of those days. But yes, if this is a government entity from another state, we know that we can only transfer the days from there to here.
Okay. So we basically accept the?
We accept whatever they had in that, in that state.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, you know, GCC, GDC. I think I'm gonna go off here now. I'm walking places. I'm sorry. Got too many G's on me, G's. All right. So that's, that's GCC, GCC R and GDC, uh, in terms of ninety days, um, of sick leave, moving to a hundred and twenty days sick leave. Okay? All right. We have been tasked with developing a sick leave bank. And a, um, policy, uh, supports that. That is GCC AAAA. Okay? The rule was GCC AAAA dash R. And exhibits are GCC AAAA and GCC AAAE one. Okay? So GCC AAAA, goodness gracious, uh, is a, is a new policy. We look at policy that, that other schools may have had in place and we look at what we can give from the side of the school boards association. And we try to create a policy that we thought that we could work with here in Bamberg. Um, so this is a totally new policy. Staff members who have employed with the district for two consecutive years are eligible to receive donated sick leave from medically certified illnesses. The employee or member of his or her immediate family must have experienced a catastrophic illness or injury defined as a severe doctor-certified, long-term health-related condition that requires the services of a licensed medical professor, professional over a prolonged period of time and results in an extended absence for treatment or recovery. Eligibility may also apply if the employee may also have an illness or condition which extends over thirty or more consecutive working days, which would cause a staff member to exhaust all accumulated leave earned during his or her employment with this district. All leave donation requests will be reviewed and either approved or denied by a superintendent-appointed sick leave bank panel in accordance with this policy. Donation of a sick leave by staff members is strictly voluntary. No employee will be coerced, threatened, intimidated or financially induced to donate sick leave under this policy. It's strictly voluntary. The program will be implemented in a manner that prohibits discrimination on basis of race, color, religion, sex, including gender identity, sexual orientation, pregnancy, childbirth or any related medical conditions, national origin, age, disability, genetic information or any other status protected by applicable law, local, state or federal law. Okay? So in order to donate leave, once again, it's voluntary, okay? You have to make your donation during an annual enrollment period, which shall occur from July the first through August the tenth of each school year. You have been employed with the district for a minimum of two consecutive years. Donate no less, no fewer than five days and no more than twenty days of sick leave during the school year. And ensure that the remaining sick leave balance does not fall below fifteen days after the donation. Okay? That's to donate it. All right. To receive it, you must be a member of the sick leave bank. The only people that can draw out and have to put days in it. Have been employed with the district for a minimum of two consecutive years. Have exhausted all accumulated sick and annual leave days. Remain on leave at the time of the request and meet all qualifications outlined in this policy and receive approval from the sick leave panel. Staff members who can release to work for any portion of the work day are not eligible to receive donated sick leave. So if you're allowed to come back and work a half-day, you're not allowed, you're not eligible for it. The fate of the date, a staff member is approved for payment under any long-term disability policy that will no longer qualify to utilize donated sick leave days. All right. Maximum number of sick leave bank days that may be awarded to an employee is forty-five days per school year. With a lifetime maximum of nine days during his or her employment with the district. Okay? Okay? That is what we're proposing to you tonight, the GCC-A-A-A for a sick leave bank program. Okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. Olmer.
Yes, sir.
Members of the board, you've heard the recommendation from the interim superintendent. What's the pleasure of the board?
I moved that we approved the first reading of policy A through G.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Cochran to approve the first reading of Section G of A through G. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Here none, motion passes. Thank you.
We've been suspended this year because they have to sign up by a good time.
We're gonna open up a special enrollment period.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And it says that in the rule, actually, it's the right days, but we can actually, um...
It said you can have another...
We can have another time, Mr. President.
Good job. All right, the South Carolina Education Scholarship Trust Fund Program is next on our agenda, Mr. Olmer?
Are you doing that?
Or Mr. Fur?
I grabbed it.
I grabbed it, I grabbed it. I'm sure y'all heard a lot of the legislation about the Education Scholarship Trust Fund Program. Um, I'm gonna go way back here, and I am so loud, y'all can hear me loud enough. Anyway, so, we have actually had an out-of-district student come to us, they qualified for this program, but because we are not a vendor within the program, that student cannot use their scholarship money towards our district. We talked about this, about, you know, about trying to be a part of it. It would benefit us, because the child that gets these scholarship money could buy laptops, they could pay, so let's say they need a tutor, and you know, we don't have loans right this moment for after-school programs, but if they needed a tutor, they could actually take their money and pay the tutor. So, there is a benefit to this program, and there are school districts that are a part of this, and so what we're asking y'all tonight is for us to be able to apply for this, to be a member of this scholarship program. So, if our kids that pay out-of-district want to apply, then they can. I mean, this year, they're only taking like the five, no, this year is ten thousand scholarships will be awarded, and next year will be fifteen thousand. And I just think if our kids that are paying out-of-district, they wanna come here, they've been willing to pay, and, you know, they cannot exceed, for next, for this year, cannot exceed three hundred percent of poverty, next year's gonna be four hundred percent of poverty, so a lot of our kids that are paying out-of-district could possibly qualify for this. And it's just extra money into the district. So, we just need board approval to apply to be a part of it.
Okay, wait, are you saying that they pay the tuition to kind of, so out-of-district, out-of-district?
Yes, out-of-district, yes. Andrew Jackson, I was talking to you, I was, so, if we have excess things, we offer it to the schools around us, we offer it to the private schools, public schools, and Andrew Jackson was getting some things from me the other day, and they are a part of this group. And so, they have kids that attend Andrew Jackson, are getting a scholarship and paying their tuition to there, to them, out of this money.
So, they only paid the tuition once, it's not like double-dipping?
No, it's not double-dipping. They will pay that tuition, yes, ma'am. And if they wanna get it next year, they have to reapply, as far as, it's the way I understand it. So, you have to apply each year for the scholarship money. And I don't foresee this going away. They worked too hard to get it in place, and I don't see legislators doing away with this.
What, are there any cons to this? Are there any reasons we would not consider it?
Not from what I look at, no. There are no cons to us not doing it. It would benefit us and the students. I know, like, for them, for Andrew, because I was only talking to them, like, for Andrew Jackson, their parents are willing to, because money can only be spent for certain things. It can only be spent for educational items. Like, your students are gonna buy educational supplies and donate them to the school. So, you know, if your students are willing to do that, they could donate to their grade level, or their classroom. If they need a laptop, instead of the district buying a laptop, they can buy their own laptop through the district. I mean, we could purchase it, and they could pay us back for it. I don't really see any cons to this. I think the school just needs to get on board with every other entity that's getting money out of this, because, like, we have speech therapists that can offer services outside of the school. Well, they could also go through this program and be paid for their services as well. So, I don't see any cons to this, we just need y'all's approval to apply for it.
And this apparently has been around since twenty-three, so this is gonna last a few years.
It has, but it's been a big, it's been a big discussion, because a lot of people don't agree with this. I mean, it's been a fight within the legislators themselves over this. A lot of people think that it's paid for charter schools and private schools, which it is. It will pay for charter schools and private schools, but it will also help the public school students as well. So, we can help our people that are paying out-of-district, that are gonna apply for this.
Okay, thank you.
No, it says, "Students enrolled in a public charter school, home school, and students participating in the Educational Credit for Exceptional Needs Children's Fund Program" are not eligible.
Okay, so there is a different part of money for students with disabilities. They get that, that's another part of money. We don't have anybody doing that.
And we don't have to pay anything, or do you have to write reports?
Um, we probably, you probably do have to do some reporting, but...
It's not a problem.
It's not a problem. We do a lot of reporting, so. One more thing would not be a problem. And it benefits our students. I mean, if it benefits our students, then it's not, you know, it's not, there's no cons to that. We need to benefit our students.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fur. Y'all have heard Ms. Fur's recommendation concerning the South Carolina Education Scholarship Trust Fund Program. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we approve that our district apply to be a vendor for the South Carolina Education Scholarship Trust Fund Program.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from this bunch, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next, I believe, Ms. Fur.
Okay, so we had a public hearing before the meeting tonight. We had three guests, which was nice, it was nice to have three people here asking questions about this budget, so that was great, and it was good conversation, too. Feedback from them, feedback from me, so it was a great conversation. So, now, at this point, the budget is balanced at twenty-seven million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Now, I need to draw to just approve the budget as presented.
And it's balanced?
It is balanced.
Good job, Ms. Fur.
Yes.
All right, you've heard a recommendation from the administration concerning the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget as presented by Ms. Fur.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Bamberg for the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I know that something was reduced down, can you tell us what was reduced down on the budget, have you got the documents?
Um, so, I'm sorry, I forgot to check it out. Hold on. So, we did not replace the superintendent. As y'all know, we hired the assistant superintendent to be our assistant superintendent, and we did not replace him either. So, that was part of the savings. Also, we cut some supplies, um, let's see, there were several things. I'm sorry if you'd ask me that the other night, I could've told you off the top of my head.
We didn't off of the retiree.
Retiree, well, no, we did not do that. So, some of the things that I suggested that affected personnel, we backed off of, because we decided coming into school starting, it would be very difficult to tell people, okay, I'm cutting your days, I'm cutting your pay. So, we did not do that. I cut in places that I could. The big chunk of savings was not replacing the superintendent and moving the assistant superintendent to interment, not replacing him. So, that was your big savings right there, package deal-wise. There was a technology item, I can't remember off the top of my head which one it was, but I realize we didn't spend any of it last year, so I took it off. So, there were various spots, supplies, there was some technology money, we took off the table, and I talked to Mr. Padgett before I did that, so I was going, you know, but we spent a lot of S-Form technology, so right now, he's in good shape, so we talked about his money before I cut it, cut him, cut supplies.
We didn't need as many A's, I think.
Yeah, we took A's off buses, thank you, y'all remember. I have, it was not great. Taking A's off buses, um, talk, uh, days every night, we're not doing days every night, we need to change that policy. Y'all helped me, y'all were all in the room, my brain is not remembering all we did. It was several things. I did everything I could to not affect people, affect other things.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good job, Ms. Fur.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
And just to clarify, we did not raise meals, is that correct?
Oh, no, 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 we did not raise meals, we are not raising taxes.
Okay.
Just say, just say right in there, we're not raising taxes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not much carries, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is visitors' comments. I see nobody has signed up, so now we're going down to item fifteen, which is executive session to discuss employment personnel matters related to personnel recommendations for hire, personnel recommendations for resignation, and to discuss matters related to the release of students. What is the pleasure of the board regarding executive session?
May I say something before we do that?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
Um, we don't have a whole lot of visitors, but I just wanted to let Ms. Fur know, we really appreciate you being here, and the outstanding job that you, and the PTO, that Airheart, Bamberg Airheart, Richard Carroll, whatever, that you all did for the returning teachers and parent professionals, they just did an outstanding job of welcoming everybody. So, thank you, appreciate that.
I think we have envy of the school district. Everybody wants...
I'm really, really hoping Denmark will buy into that as well, their school would benefit from one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm making a motion that we enter an executive session to discuss employment personnel matters related to personnel recommendations for hire, personnel recommendations for resignation, and to discuss related release of students.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion for Ms. Echols regarding executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are going to now go into executive session. And we are going to now go into executive session.
All right, board members, I'll entertain a motion to return out of executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we come out of executive session and return to open session.
All right, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Bamberg to return to open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're out of executive session. I'll entertain any motions concerning actions from executive session.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we accept the personal recommendation for hiring for, uh, for person 1A. Um, I also make a motion that we accept the release of students 1 through 17.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Eccles. We have a motion from Ms. Eccles that we accept the recommendations of the administration for hiring, uh, for employee 1A and the recommendation for transfers from students 1 through 17. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposes? Motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda is a new agenda item. This is board member comments. Uh, this is an opportunity for the board to, uh, make comments. Uh, I'm gonna start off and then I'm gonna go to Ms. Govan. Uh, we're, we're happy that the new school year has started. I wish, uh, all the best to all the faculty, staff, uh, and administration of our schools. Uh, we believe that the children are our most important resource and, uh, we ask you to, uh, care for them, love them, but most of all, teach them. Uh, and we, uh, we hope y'all have a very good year and, uh, I want to thank y'all. Uh, the job of being a teacher gets harder and harder every year. I did it for a lot of years and we appreciate you being with us. Ms. Govan, have you got anything you would like to say?
I think he didn't say anything. Uh, we definitely would like, uh, Mr. Olmer, if you would have, um, all of the schools to let the students and the staff know that we welcome them back. We kinda like took to the theme, um, from the association as well, um, basically what Mr. Porter said, um, welcome them back and we are 100% behind them. Um, definitely go for the goal of excellence.
Ms. Saris?
Okay, thank you. Um, I also am very excited about this school year and I hope everybody has a wonderful year and they have a chance to really succeed and excel. And I thought there was so much enthusiasm expressed towards us when we were either visiting teachers. Um, I did it for a little while in one of the schools or at that luncheon. I want to thank the school for having that luncheon for all of us. And the teachers are the backbone of our success, I think, and I just am thrilled they're here and I'm glad that we have a steady administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Olmer, just district level staff, principals, the teachers, and support staff. Um, I visited some of the schools and very impressed with what's going on. And, uh, I just feel like we're gonna have a very, very good year and we appreciate all the hard work. And we need the support of the fair to, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Eccles?
Um, I also just want to echo everybody else's sentiments. We just want to say welcome back. We're excited for a new school year. Say welcome to, um, all of our new, um, teachers and staff. Thank you for coming and participating and being here with us in our community with our students. Thank you to Mr. Olmer and all the staff, administration staff that, and the bus drivers for all that you guys are doing. We appreciate you so very much.
Ms. Griffin?
I want to thank each and every one of you who've put forth all this effort to bring this beginning to a new year, a new school year. Uh, I know the effort as I was walking through and looking at the different classrooms and talking to the teachers, it didn't seem like that long ago that I was in that classroom, that I was one of the ones putting the boards and stuff. I know how much energy, effort, sweat, and creative juices it takes to put all that together and be ready for those kids that come in or came in this morning. And, uh, just can't say enough about those people who have accepted, uh, the responsibility of these children and in wanting and having a strong desire to give them the tools that they need to be productive.
Thank you. Ms. Bamberg?
I would also like to say thank you for Mr. Olmer, your staff, and wish all the principals, assistant principals, teachers, and students a very great year. Um, and to the students, I hope that you would take advantage of the time you have now. Learn all you can, excel in all your classes because there's a great big world out there that you're gonna be competing against other students. So make sure you take advantage of what you're learning in the schools every day. And thank you all for all you do for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Budge?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Olmer, for being willing to, um, take on the leadership position that you have. Um, we very much appreciate that and to the district staff as well. Um, all of the teachers, faculty, bus drivers, custodians, everyone that works to put this, um, school in motion day in and day out. Um, and I, um, am praying daily for physical, emotional, social, and mental, um, health, well-being, and, and development of, of everyone in this district and, um, wish everyone a wonderful school year.
Thank you. All right, ladies. Next on our agenda is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Eccles. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're out of executive session. I'll entertain any, uh, motions concerning actions from executive session.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I make a motion that we accept the personal recommendation for hiring for, uh, for person 1A. Um, I also make a motion that we accept the release of students 1 through 17.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Eccles. We have a motion from Ms. Eccles, uh, that we accept the recommendations of the administration for hiring, uh, for employee 1A and the recommendation for transfers from students 1 through 17. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda is a new agenda item. This is, uh, board member comments. Uh, this is an opportunity for the board to, uh, uh, make comments. Uh, I'm gonna start off and then I'm gonna go to Ms. Govan. Uh, we're, we're happy that the new school year has started. I wish, uh, all the best to all the faculty, staff, uh, and administration of our schools. Uh, we, we believe that the children are our most important resource and, uh, we ask you to, uh, care for them, love them, but most of all, teach them. Uh, and we, uh, we hope y'all have a very good year and, uh, well, I want to thank y'all. Uh, the job of, of being a teacher gets harder and harder every year. I did it for a lot of years and we appreciate you being with us. Ms. Govan, have you got anything you would like to say?
I think he didn't say anything. Uh, we definitely would like, uh, Mr. Olmer, if you would have, um, all of the schools to let the students and the staff know that we welcome them back. We kinda like took to the theme, um, from the association as well, um, basically what Mr. Porter said, um, welcome them back and we are 100% behind them. Um, and definitely go for the goal of excellence.
Ms. Saris?
Okay, thank you. Um, I also am very excited about this school year and I hope everybody has a wonderful year and they have a chance to really succeed and excel. And I thought there was so much enthusiasm expressed towards us when we were either visiting teachers. Um, I did it for a little while in one of the schools or at that luncheon. I want to thank the school for having that luncheon for all of us. And the teachers are the backbone of our success, I think, and I just am thrilled they're here and I'm glad that we have a steady administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Olmer, just district level staff, principals, the teachers, and support staff. Um, I visited some of the schools and very impressed with what's going on. And, uh, I just feel like we're gonna have a very, very good year and we appreciate all the hard work. And we need the support of the fair to, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Eccles?
Um, I also just want to echo everybody else's sentiments. We just want to say welcome back. We're excited for a new school year. Say welcome to, um, all of our new, um, teachers and staff. Thank you for coming and participating and being here with us in our community with our students. Thank you to Mr. Olmer and all the staff, um, administration staff that, and the bus drivers for all that you guys are doing. We appreciate you so very much.
Ms. Griffin?
I want to thank each and every one of you who've put forth all this effort to bring this beginning to a new year, a new school year. Uh, I know the effort as I was walking through and looking at the different classrooms and talking to the teachers, it didn't seem like that long ago that I was in that classroom, that I was one of the ones putting the boards and stuff. I know how much energy, effort, sweat, and creative juices it takes to put all that together and be ready for those kids that come in or came in this morning. And, uh, just can't say enough about those people who have accepted, uh, the responsibility of these children and in wanting and having a strong desire to give them the tools that they need to be productive.
Thank you. Ms. Bamberg?
I would also like to say thank you for Mr. Olmer, your staff, and wish all the principals, assistant principals, teachers, and students a very great year. Um, and to the students, I hope that you would take advantage of the time you have now. Learn all you can, excel in all your classes because there's a great big world out there that you're gonna be competing against other students. So make sure you take advantage of what you're learning in the schools every day. And thank you all for all you do for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Budge?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Olmer, for being willing to, um, take on the leadership position that you have. Um, we very much appreciate that and to the district staff as well. Um, all of the teachers, faculty, bus drivers, custodians, everyone that works to put this, um, school in motion day in and day out. Um, and I, um, am praying daily for physical, emotional, social, and mental, um, health, well-being, and, and development of, of everyone in this district and, um, wish everyone a wonderful school year.
Thank you. All right, ladies. Next on our agenda is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Eccles. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say bye.
Bye.
(laughing)